This meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. A quorum is present. I'd like to welcome everyone who's watching this meeting on WISD-TV cable, Channel 17, or online at wacoisd.org/live. On March 16th, the Governor of Texas granted a request from the state's Attorney General to temporarily suspend certain open meetings laws in order to allow telephonic or videoconference meetings in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. One, members of the public may watch this meeting live on WISD-TV, Channel 17 on Grande Communications and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Two, notice that this meeting was posted online for at least 72 hours. Three, to comment on an agenda item, members of the public were instructed in the notice for the meeting to submit their comments in writing to Joshua Wuchter via email by 10:00 last night. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by videoconference. Five, we are meeting by use of the Zoom videoconferencing application, which allows for two-way communication. Six, there is no limit on the number of people who can stream the meeting live online and/or watch it live on cable, Channel 17. Seven, all other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adoptioned procedures to the extent practicable. Eight, all items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. Nine, a video recording of this meeting is being made and will be posted on the district's website at a later date. Ten, if you have questions about these suspended laws, please contact the Office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787, or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. At this time, the board will reconvene in closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 (Consultation with Attorney), 551.072 (Real Property), and 551.074 (Regarding Personnel). At the end of our closed session, we will reconvene here in the videoconference and resume our meeting with public comments. Unless anybody has an objection, I'm going to go ahead and move Jared's report up next after public comment.
We are good to go.
Okay, okay. So, we are back from closed session where no action was taken. Next on the agenda is public comments. As I noted earlier, comments were asked to be sent to Josh Wuchter by 10:00 last night. Mr. Wuchter, did you receive any public comments?
Madam President, I did not receive any comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, unless there's an objection, I would like to move Item 8, Review and Discuss Paul Tyson Stadium Update, since Jared Sturzinger is already with us on the line. Is that okay, Dr. Kincanon? Do we have anyone appearing for our special recognitions?
We have our Executive Director of Human Resources. I could announce her quickly in the superintendent's report. That's the only item I have there, and otherwise, I think it's just us.
Okay, so, Dr. Kincanon, let's take Number 6, Superintendent's Report. Go to Number 8.
Okay, great. It is my pleasure to introduce to the board this evening Ronron Karadeen, who will be joining Waco ISD as our new Executive Director for Human Resources. Would you wave, Ronita? There she is.
Welcome.
Ronita comes to us with 23 years of experience in public education. 22 of those years were in Fort Worth ISD. She's been a classroom teacher, she's been an instructional specialist, she's been an elementary assistant principal, and she has been a principal, and she is currently a principal, of a Montessori campus in Fort Worth ISD. She received a bachelor's degree in communications and a master's in curriculum instruction from Temple University, and a master's in theology from Texas Christian University, and she's currently pursuing a doctorate in theological studies through the North Texas Theological Seminary. And we're pleased to have Ronita in the school district, and I would offer her an opportunity to greet the board.
Thank you. Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. I just want to say, good evening, President Tekel, to the board, and Dr. Kincanon. I'm very pleased and excited to be joining the Waco ISD team, and can't wait to see what new adventures lie ahead. So, thank you so much for allowing me to participate this evening, and I truly look forward to getting to know all of you, and thank you.
Thank you, Ronita.
Thank you so much for joining us, and I'm sorry. Normally, we would greet you in person and maybe recognize any family members or special folks that you bring with you, so I'm sorry we can't do that tonight, but we're excited to get to know you. And how do you say your last name? Karadeen?
Karadeen.
Karadeen, okay.
Karadeen, yes.
Soon to be Dr. Karadeen, though.
Yes.
And I know Dr. Gutierrez is really excited about Ronita coming on board to help us, and she'll be with us soon.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, next, let's proceed with Item 8, Review and Discuss Paul Tyson Stadium Update. Jared Sturzinger from O'Connell Robertson.
Madam President, are you going to move 8, 9, and 10?
Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, let's move 8, 9, and 10. Jared, are you back with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all yours.
Great. Well, thank you all very much for having us tonight. I'm Jared with O'Connell Robertson, and joining me here tonight as well is Amy Jones, a fellow principal and president of the firm, and then also Meg Grayson, who is an architect here with us. And we've been working on the Waco Paul Tyson Field Educational Suitability and Capacity Study here over the last month, and happy to be able to present that to the Board of Trustees and Dr. Kincanon here tonight. So, Josh, if you want to pull up the presentation?
I'll have that in just a moment.
Okay. So, I'll start into it and then get caught up here as we go on the presentation. So, Paul Tyson Field, as you recall, we started, presented this project, and it's a result of discussions with the city of Waco, with McLennan County, and then Waco ISD, and just the shift in property and location for Paul Tyson Field there at Waco High School. We presented an initial project of really focusing in on a high-level concept. So, if you want to go to Slide Number 3 here. High-level concept of the individual parts and pieces that would make up this campus and potential project. And over the last two months, we've really focused in on the schematic design phase about defining the program, about starting to look at individual layouts, and we're right on that verge of completing schematic design. So, tonight, we wanted to be able to present an update and really touch on some of the project drivers, which are really formulating the building blocks around the project scope of what the project will look like here as we move towards construction documents. So, starting with the first driver on the next slide, it was really about addressing locker room capacity and support on the site, on the Waco ISD site. And in particular, you'll notice in the top-left of the image that Paul Tyson Field in this view has been grayed out, and that's because eventually that property will transition to McLennan County. And so, we asked ourselves, as we look at the 850 lockers that are on the campus, how do we support the 165 lockers that are on Paul Tyson Field currently? And so, we've started discussions with the campus about how we can look at that space, and ultimately are looking, you'll notice a red, green, and blue block in the center of the screen, of renovating some of the existing facilities to be able to support the students and the athletes there onsite. We believe we can create the right amount of space within those areas and really enhance the function and locker room capacity. It also puts them on the main campus of the site. As we begin to look at the specifics of that, we may end up having to switch and build a few new locker rooms as part of the project, but ultimately, we're trying to provide that best long-term value balancing existing facilities in place and existing uses with meeting those needs of the athletes. On the next slide, you'll see our second driver, which is surrounding the parking on Waco High School's site. So, Waco High School is featured in the middle of this diagram, bordered on the north by Trice, on the south by Colcord, and then 42nd and 44th on each side. And so, we started looking at, first, the city of Waco zoning requirements, not only for students attending the school, but then also from a spectator standpoint of what the zoning requirements would be for the stadium. So, you'll see those numbers there at 875 parking stalls for the students and 500 parking stalls if there are 2,000 seats in the grandstands. You'll see then that we're starting to evaluate where some of the existing parking is on the site, shown in the red bubbles, some potential areas for new parking lots as the properties transition both on the Waco ISD property as well as future Waco ISD that's shown in orange. And then as well, we're starting to look at, you know, one of those opportunities in sharing with the city parking on-street as they look to rebuild Lake Air Little League Fields, or with McLennan County on the venue project there on the far-right of the drawing. Again, we're trying to find that right balance. We're continuing discussions about student safety, fan safety, and cost along the way. As we go to the third slide, Facility Building Program really becomes the grocery list, I always call it, of what you want to buy in a new facility. And so, here, we're looking at the elements that would support Paul Tyson Field, not only in terms of game day, but every day. So, you'll see it broken down into three sections. The first would be the new facilities going onto Paul Tyson, which include ticketing concession restroom, storage for the field. The second section is really those locker room renovations that we mentioned in Item 1. And then last one is the outdoor events, is making sure that as we talk about the architectural field, that it has the right markings on the field, that we get the right track and field events, and getting that input from the campus to be able to make sure that we're checking all the boxes there along the way. And so, as we look at these building blocks, the 1 through 3, this starts getting into the site concept of how these elements start coming together. So, again, this diagram is zoomed in a little bit on the site. So, at the top of the diagram is Trice Avenue, on the right side is 42nd Street, and on the left is 44th Street, and the main Waco ISD campus is starting at the bottom of the image and then goes off the image. So, really, we wanted to start with the overall approach to the site, about how you enter into the site, how it starts creating an identity. And so, you'll notice that we've created a main entry on the northwest side of the site that really provides an opportunity to celebrate individuals coming to the game and that interaction. It provides opportunity to engage with some of those parking elements that we had identified, both the city of Waco across the street, the potential onsite Waco ISD property that was adjacent to the proposed baseball softball fields, or with McLennan County with the 500 parking stalls. It as well works pretty well with the parking onsite. So, you'll notice on the far-right of the diagram, you'll see the additional parking or practice field, we're working out exactly those elements. Ultimately, in this design, we're looking for that flexibility in the future as the site continues to evolve, so we're kind of keeping that in mind as well. Here, as we do talk about design, we really want to focus in on the student and the athlete experience. So, you'll notice at the bottom center of the diagram, you have the fieldhouse, so there's, will be direct access from the fieldhouse to the field. And then as we look at those, again, those locker rooms, the gymnasium, which is centered a little bit between the engineering building and the fieldhouse, students can access the field without, in a safe and secure manner. From an athlete experience, we're not only looking at those game day events for track, for football, for soccer, and how students get there, but also the opposing teams. So, we're discussing how buses may come along 44th Street into a pull-off and have that safe, direct on and off of the bus onto the facility. And ultimately, we're looking at as well the fan experience from that entry, how we celebrate with the architecture, what the procession is like once you get inside the facility into the grandstands and that interaction. So, you'll notice it's a long linear concept that really puts most of the spectators close to the event, so you get a lot of excitement and interaction with the game, and really celebrate this not only as a practice venue, but also a competition venue as you look at freshman JV soccer and track events here. Our next level, or our next effort, is going to be really stepping through the next levels of design. So, we are meeting with the coaches actually tomorrow and continuing to that next level of looking in the buildings and working out those further details as well. Another element, the fifth driver that we had identified, is really the impact the field has on the baseball softball complex. So, you'll see in the center of the image, a ghosted image of the football field, and that is where the current Lions practice baseball and softball. So, the construction will require us to look at alternative locations. And so, right now, we're looking at three locations, starting at the bottom right is potentially reusing the existing Lake Air Little League fields, which will transfer ownership to Waco ISD. The potential of building new facilities at the northwest corner, you'll see two green kind of pie shapes there, or looking at shared facilities with the city of Waco there where the proposed Lake Air Little League fields. All offer pros and cons in terms of cost, in terms of timing, and really, we're trying to find that right opportunity to address the impact during construction. How do we align with playing, practicing on fields that we compete on is, you know, practice makes perfect, so we want to make sure the field events there are that way as well. And then finally, Item Number 6 here is really kind of keying into that impact on facilities of what does the phasing and scoping look like here. So, we're starting from a grand level of looking how we're going to step through this project. So, initially, we know that, you'll see in the top-left, needing to address baseball and softball in the fall, knowing that they're going to start practicing games in the spring. So, we want to try and get them a place to work, work out here locally as quickly as possible. Next step would be building the track and field and the practice fields there on the north end of the Waco ISD property. And then in the summer, as properties transfer and students go off-campus, is be able to get in and do the locker room renovations that you see in the center of the diagram, as well as the potential parking additions there that may be needed to meet the capacity needs, the parking capacity needs along the way. All these items, there are a lot of items here that come into this role of schematic design. These elements, like supporting our students in the interim and the long-term, or having conversations with Coach Love and trying to find that right opportunity to be able to present. And ultimately, this will represent the schematic design or go into the schematic design deliverable for the Paul Tyson Field. So, just a quick update, and would welcome any questions you have on the Paul Tyson Field design progress.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm trying to remember how we got here. Yeah, maybe I shouldn't think about it too hard. Okay, so, the northwest property up there with the baseball softball is projected to be built. I guess that we determined there's, it's not, there's just not enough room there to put the stadium, is that correct?
So, when we had originally evaluated, we had looked at multiple options, and the football field, the stadium, was originally proposed there. And look at sports, when we talk about track, field, soccer, football, potential other uses, the majority of athletes use that complex. And so, we had identified and discussed that putting that onsite is that best interaction with the existing facilities and access without having to cross the street. So, we're trying to, you know, provide that parallel between the two, or provide that level of safety and security for the most number of students onsite.
So, the least evil is to have baseball and softball over there?
In essence, yes, you could phrase it that way.
Okay. And I guess the other place I thought we were considering would be on the eastern half of the section of land that the city's retaining to put Little League fields on, but I think that was going to encompass part of the recycling center. And I thought that was where we were headed for a while, but everybody kind of understood it was going to be a real problem for the city to relocate the recycling center in any kind of timely manner. But is that the only reason we abandoned that, or has it got other drawbacks we haven't thought of?
That was primarily the discussion in the late 2019, early 2020. McLennan County, city of Waco, and Waco ISD met and evaluated, they had called those options A, B, and C. A and B were located on the east end, and yes, it was impactful to the recycling center, and overall timing of the project would potentially push this out five years based on funding from the city to make those happen. And so, ultimately, kind of the best interest of all parties would locate the property at the northwest corner, like is shown on this diagram. That allows the flexibility for the city and the county to get moving on their projects. Basically, everybody can move independently of the other projects.
Also, a good location for the school, too, being closer to the campus, instead of having to cross roads and provide some flexibility for the future if we want to, you know, if we wanted to make any grade level configurations there, changes there.
Unless you play baseball.
Unless you play baseball, that's correct.
So, and then there's no, I guess the county's not willing to share parking with us in the future?
No, they were very open to sharing parking with us.
I was just looking at the blue rectangle up there in the northwest corner below the baseball field.
So, Josh, if you could go back to Slide Number 5. It'd be labeled Number 2 at the top, so back three more. And so, right in...
Yeah, I want to look at that one. So, the 125 spot, is that...
So, the 125 would be potentially located on Waco ISD property?
Right. They want to share with us.
Correct.
Right.
So, that would be the 550 stalls that are labeled there that extend all the way to the west, and that would be with McLennan County. And then the street parking that is 150 stalls would be with city of Waco.
150, yeah, okay. Okay, now, the red, I guess, I do want to make sure I understand that the 364 that's at the bottom, we're losing that under any circumstance, is that correct?
At some point in the future, we're currently unsure of the timeline on that one. It is something that we're trying to figure out. That's why one of the, this is really a driver, is understanding the timing of all of these parking lots will really impact, you know, what's required of everybody. And then we intend to have discussions with city of Waco as well of the zoning ordinance, and how can we count on-street parking and basically make sure that we're providing a design in the best interest of Waco ISD.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Angela.
Yes, sir.
Jared, to kind of build on what Kerry was identifying, there's no question, locker rooms, those facilities are needing to be reworked at Waco High, I would say fairly My concern is, kind of like Kerry was saying, it seems like we may be retrofitting existing facilities and depending, I understand your concept of the track and field, you know, being closer on that northwest corner, but it seems like still a lot of our athletes are having to use facilities for dressing and lockers that are a fur piece from where their practice field locations are going to be.
So, it definitely is something that we're evaluating, and so, on this diagram, right next to the 58, to the left of that, is the football locker room. So, there's a good amount of students there that would be able to directly access the field within feet. And then kind of in the center-left, you'll see the two gymnasiums there to the left of the tennis courts, that they're probably within 200 feet of the practice field. And that was what I was mentioning about providing safe routes and going between the engineering building or the CTE building and the existing fieldhouse, that they would have secure access onsite to get into the field from that standpoint. So, it is something that we're very aware of, of making sure that we think about the students and how they access the site, something that we're talking about even game day, about how you address halftime, and how students can get on and off the field quickly for those meetings, all those discussions.
So, on that lot that has 58, are you saying that that may become a building?
No, that's 50 parking stalls. I was just trying to use it as a marker to point.
Okay, okay. I thought you were identifying that as, you know, ideal location from a traffic standpoint, not auto traffic, but from a, you know, athlete traffic standpoint. Okay. Okay.
Anybody else? All right, Jared, you want to keep going?
Yeah, so, we will continue developing schematic design for Paul Tyson and continue moving that forward. And then for, I believe it's Agenda Item Number 9, we were asked to present a study on the facility capacity for Waco ISD. And as you look, our goal here is really that kind of left section about demographics and capacity is to understand what is the reasonable capacity of Waco ISD schools, and very specifically, the permanent capacity of those schools. And so, as we look at the facilities overview on the next slide, it really speaks to the, we walked every campus on the district to understand where are their classrooms, what are the uses of the rooms. That was 25 facilities, that includes two high schools, four high school support, four middle schools, 13 elementary schools, and two elementary-middle school supports, so that would be like Lake Air Montessori. And so, as we looked at that facility capacity study, I wanted to give a brief overview of what that means. So, on the next slide, you'll see that, one, our goal is to determine the reasonable item of the campus, and that's defined by two major elements. The first, of course, is classroom capacity, is in our classrooms and our learning environments, how many students can we put within those spaces? So, that's not only core classrooms, but as we look at secondary level, that includes spaces like band halls, gymnasiums, everywhere that classes are held. And so, that's one half of the equation. The other half is core capacity. It is not only do you have to be able to teach those students, but you need to feed them, you need to have library that are regulated by elements like TEA from a library size. We call that core capacity, and the two of those work in parallel. It's as well as we start looking at facilities with portables, of whether or not the portable's impact or can be supported and overall create a tightness on the property if there's not enough core capacity in that case. And finally, when you look at classroom capacity, core capacity, we know that there are a lot of factors that affect that. In essence, you can't occupy every classroom every period of the day with 25 students in every single classroom. Is that teachers have off periods and planning periods, your grade level alignment may not align, and so, we call that effective functional capacity, and that's that reasonable occupancy of a school. So, that's really what we're going to focus on today, is that reasonable occupancy. And so, as you go to the next slide, the results of those studies of walking through the campuses, working through the calculations, you'll see here a summary of school by school. For example, Alta Vista is showing a effective facility capacity of 500... For example, Alta Vista is showing a effective facility capacity of 580 students. As you go down the list, you'll see then by groupings, we have elementary school, elementary schools and their totals and then respective middle schools and high schools. So in effect, roughly, you can handle, it's about 18,000 students, 18,000 to 19,000 students within the permanent facilities at Waco ISD. And so the question comes, which is on the next slide, of how portables impact this or how are portables within the district? And so right now, those numbers that we looked at facility capacity, permanent facilities, permanent facilities only. And so district-wide portables, there are 45 portables, which in essence provide two classrooms or two spaces per portable. So there's 86 classroom spaces there. They're used for a multitude of functions, everything from classroom to music and art all the way to office and storage. And so preview, which gets into the next slide a little bit, is we start evaluating, actually, if you want to go back one, Josh, is evaluating the capacity and enrollment. And the summary on the portables are there are 10 schools that have portables where the enrollment is less than the permanent capacity, meaning that the portables potentially aren't needed. And then there are three campuses whereby the numbers, their enrollment is above the permanent capacity of the facility, meaning you have more students attending that school than you could house in the actual school facility. They're having to use the portables there. So you see those listed. And how did we get that information? So on the next slide, we evaluated with the help of the Templeton Demographics Report from October of 2019, what enrollment looks like, which you see in the yellow column. And so we start comparing the capacity and the enrollment to understand where you sit overall in the scheme. On the next slide, you'll see those two numbers directly compared. So again, using Alta Vista as the example, is the permanent capacity of Alta Vista is 580 students that you could reasonably fit, and their current enrollment is 501. And again, line item by item, you get to the summary then that at the elementary school level, you have approximately 6,800 students enrolled in Waco ISD as of October of last year and a capacity just under 10,000 students overall. And so when you pull these three elements together, from the capacity to the demographics, what are the key findings here? And if you'll go to the next slide, Josh, we identified for is overall, Waco ISD facilities are about two-thirds to three-quarters utilized. And right now, just like a school that you can't occupy every seat, students don't necessarily live exactly in the right zones. So usually in that 90 to 95% is where we start looking at needing to add facilities dependent upon growth, and then you look at the individual campuses. In this case, I would identify that there's one campus that really is over permanent capacity. So just as an example, one of the schools is literally one student over the capacity. So it's reasonably that they could handle that along the way. But the one that we had identified here is at around 200 students over capacity. We talked about the portables and the number of portables and the use of those. So there's opportunity to either remove or reallocate those portables. And then from a core capacity, most are on target, but there are a few that there's not enough capacity within those core facilities that we are recommending augmenting library or cafeteria to be able to support the student population there.
Hey Jared?
Yes, sir.
I differentiate between, okay, so you've got both Kendrick and Parkdale that have enrollment above their stated capacity, but the difference, you only list one of them as being, I didn't understand.
So that-
One more time.
Yep. So on that one, Tennyson is actually the one that is the most overcapacity.
Okay, and that's because of the core facilities?
Well, it's actually the permanent classroom facility. So there are portables effectively. So Hillcrest is the one that is one over, so they have 441 students and the capacity's 440. And then as you look at Kendrick, is that one does range. So as you look at the demographics over time, we can have a discussion with the principal to see how they feel, but generally it ranges right in line with their capacity over the next 10 years is what is projected. So what I'm recommending here or identifying here is that there's one campus that really should be addressed from a capacity standpoint.
Okay, got it. Well, the smart guys from the state told us three years ago, they want to just close half our middle schools. I wish you'd have been around to show them these numbers. No way.
Any other questions that we can answer for you on the capacity study?
No, thank you.
Okay. And then agenda item number 10 is around the educational suitability assessment. And so again, as we look at the facilities master plan and the concept of pulling that together, the educational suitability assessment really focused on support of education with the built environment. So in contrast, the facility condition assessment that we reviewed last month, we looked at the, I'll call it the nuts and bolts, the HBC systems, the roof, those type of elements. This really focuses in on the elements you see here on the screen that we looked at 11 categories of elements that are 60-plus points of review. And again, we toured all the campuses throughout the district to evaluate elements like side access, how you get in and out of the facility, how the classroom environment not only supports our students, but our teachers. So that's things like whiteboards, projectors, furniture, and then as well the overall look and feel of the campus. Do you have pride into wherever you go to school, which affects the education? So on the next slide is a repeat of the previous one again, that we're aligning the data of, from the facility condition assessment, the capacity study and the educational suitability, that again, we looked at the 25 campuses in Waco ISD. So as we went through those 11 items on the next slide, or 11 categories, 60-plus items, we created a rubric, evaluated the data, and ultimately found four key findings here of information with regard to the education environment. First is not overly surprised, but there is a correlation between age and educational suitability. Ultimately, that the opportunities our newer facilities give to our students, to our teachers, there are better opportunities in the newer facilities. But there are few outliers that we would need, that we're evaluating that are not performing as well, and we're trying to determine exactly why that is in terms of those metrics and rubrics. Number two is, as we looked at a categorical across those 11, what was the number one need? And that's in supporting college and career readiness for our students. And that's, that's at all levels is the intent of that, not just at the high school level, but ultimately that means flexible spaces, supporting our teachers through collaboration, and at the high school level, even getting to try it on, you know, having medical environments that look like real world simulations, those type of elements within the design. So when we get into individual strategies for opportunities for improving the educational facilities, we get into that project-based learning environment, those things that I just mentioned, the student-teacher collaborative areas. It also gets into pedestrian and vehicular access, as many of the sites struggled, which we had talked about before, with proper queuing depths, not only for buses, but also cars. And then as well, the community use of the facilities is often the locations of libraries, gymnasiums were not conducive to using those after hours. So that could identify goals and priorities for the board moving forward. And then finally is items two and three, we're kind of looking at all Waco ISD facilities. We wanted to look at, are there a couple pitch points at some of the facilities? And so some of those include at four to five campuses that we could improve the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, basically new desk for our students and our teachers that would increase collaboration and overall use. And as well, just like the projects that are currently going under construction, there's a few facilities where security could be enhanced as well, like secure entry rates, field fencing, those type of elements. And so as we aggregated this data and, you know, start to stratify it, if you go to the next slide, we started to look at that gradient of facilities and the amount of improvement needed. So you see on the left again, from those needing the most significant improvement to the minor improvement there along the way, the spectrum of facilities in Waco ISD with response to the educational suitability. Again, how well that environment supports teachers and students. So in summary, on the next slide is you look at the facility, the facility condition assessment and the educational suitability, what are we looking at is ultimately, there's adequate permanent capacity within Waco ISD facilities to support the projected student enrollment for the next 10 years in accordance with a report. I believe Templeton is evaluating a report here pretty soon as well. So we'll again, look at that to make sure that statement still holds true. And then from the educational suitability, there was that pragmatic approach, again, looking through all the campuses, putting them on par with everybody, with each facility to analyze the educational suitability, which you saw the results in the two previous slides. So from here, you know, again, the considerations for the board is, you know, what are the expectations with regards to facilities and education and meeting the educational needs for current and future? We'll start aligning those two. You'll start getting a sense as well into the second bullet point of how these three elements start weighing together between the facility condition assessment, which we heard last month, educational suitability, and then demographics as well. Next month, we'll plan to present on the educational vision of Waco ISD. So that will get into, we'll have discussions with the Waco ISD staff to understand, I kind of phrase it as, what is the profile of the graduate? How do we want to support our students from kindergarten through 12th grade and how that aligns with the educational environment? And ultimately, hopefully, these things could inspire some concepts and some goals for a long-range plan based on this information from here. And so in summary, or in final summary, this is the third or the fourth element of the facilities master plan. Josh, if you want to go to the next slide. And that starts providing a framework or a vision of the current status of the facilities with regards to these three elements. And the last one becomes that education or pedagogy and the intersection of those will really help to provide the Board of Trustees with information to move forward, on how to move forward or where they could move forward on a facilities master plan if that's desired. So with that, we'll take any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions? A lot of really good work, Jared. Thank you so much. And I think we had talked about our goal of having a community long-range facility planning committee, and I can see, once we get to that point, that they're going to use all of this information in those conversations. It's going to be really invaluable at that point. So thank you so much for-
Madam President, just a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Sykes.
Dr. King Cannon, do we own those portables? Do you know?
We own some of them and we're leasing some portables. And I looked at that a few months ago, and I wouldn't be able to recall it at the moment on how many. We have a good number of portables that we're leasing and at a good cost per year, so there's the opportunity to save some money for the district.
Now, to the extent that they're using for storage as opposed to classroom, that was-
Yeah. Now, you know, depends on the condition of some, some of them didn't look very good when I toured facilities. And so, you know, we'll have to prioritize which ones come off.
Well, my concern also is there are safety and security issues on those-
Absolutely.
-as they populate a campus, so.
Absolutely. Anytime you go outside of that main facility, you create some of those kinds of concerns.
Right.
And we have a lot of them. That's our portables.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Jared, just curious, in your study of the issue, where's our most urgent pressing need in terms of facilities? I mean, I, I mean, I'm guessing it's be at the elementary level, but tell me I'm wrong.
So we're starting to get to that next level of information intersection. So I would say right now, we're starting to look at charts and graphs to understand the intersection of the educational suitability and facility condition assessment. So yes, I would think there are a few elementary schools. I would think that Tennyson addressing capacity as well as facility condition would be interesting, would be important, and then as well as Waco High School. And so it's going to be this, we're starting to evaluate the cost to improve to current conditions, you know, kind of alluding back to the car mentality.
Right.
We grew that 65 Malibu to meet the current needs versus, you know, buying the new car. That's really going to be this discussion moving forward of, you know, do you, how do you want to rebuild that car or do you want to build the new car? Which gets into a lot of discussions about education, how you do grade level alignment or really kind of stacking, and then as well as boundaries, you know, if those things come into play. So a lot of discussion to be had from here.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Jared.
Yeah, good question. Okay, anybody, anything else?
Yeah, Angela, I got a question. And my question is, due to the current conditions and COVID-19, do we, I mean, are we expecting full capacity or are we expecting less capacity coming up for the new school year?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I can, I'm going to speak a little bit to that in my presentation later about options for next year. And so Jared's presentation is timely because you get a sense of the space that we have. And so I'll take that up in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jared.
Absolutely.
Amy and Meg, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll look forward to continuing the discussion next month.
Next month, yes.
Jared.
Okay, so let's go back now, if you're ready. Josh, just special recognitions?
Yeah, I'm going to ask that my colleague Laura share her screen.
Okay.
So you are Board of Trustees, special recognitions for this evening. Thank you very much. Okay, so Waco ISD, of course, has a long history of strong community support in the form of volunteers and partnerships, specifically through the Adopt a School program, which has been in place for more than 35 years. Each partnership between a campus and business or organization is unique, based on the needs of the campus and the resources of the partners. Generally, these partnerships fall into four categories: adult student connections, like mentoring and tutoring, incentives and motivation, workforce development, and community service. Each year, the district recognizes its partners with the celebratory event at the conclusion of the year to honor all of our partners and recognize that the year's recipients of the Adopt a School Partnership Awards. Now, although an in-person event was not able to be held for the 2019 to 2020 school year, the following individuals, businesses, and organizations are being honored for their outstanding efforts to support our students and staff in the district through their partnerships. So I'd like to introduce you to a number of our Adopt a School Partnership Awards. We're going to start with our outstanding partnership for elementary, St. Albans Episcopal Church with Cedar Ridge Elementary, as well as secondary outstanding partnership with McLennan Community College, partnering with our Waco High School. And there is a photo of St. Albans Episcopal Church with Cedar Ridge Elementary. And there is a nice photo of MCC with Waco High School. Next, we have our outstanding business coordinators for elementary, Donna Undry with HEB from Wooded Acres, with Parkdale Elementary School and Crestview Elementary School. An outstanding business- An outstanding business partner, business coordinator for secondary is Zach DePue with Tractor Supply for Caesar Chavez Middle School. And here we have Donna with Parkdale Elementary. We appreciate all that HEB has done for us and we will be talking about them in just a few minutes. And also a big thanks to Zach DePue of Tractor Supply, who is coming up in just a moment, there he is, with Caesar Chavez Middle. Next, we have our outstanding volunteers for elementary, Brad Livingston with West Avenue Elementary School. His photo will be up in just a moment. And our outstanding volunteer for secondary, Dr. Dan Walker for their service with Caesar Chavez Middle School. And you can recognize Brad there with West Avenue. We certainly appreciate the work that he does with West Avenue, as well as Dr. Walker with Caesar Chavez Middle School. Our next category is our outstanding school coordinator in partnership with Indian Spring Middle School is Travis Tiedem. And you'll see him, there he is, by the really cool Bulldogs mascot. Moving on, we have our Golden Apple Award for mentoring. That's with the First Baptist Church of Waco with Bell's Hill Elementary School. And for tutoring, the Golden Apple Award to Bonnie Reinhardt with Central United Methodist Church, helping out at Kendrick Elementary School. And there's First Baptist Church with Bell's Hill Elementary and Principal McElair, I believe, on the right. Moving on, we have Bonnie Reinhardt from Central United Methodist Church, along with Kendrick Elementary. We certainly appreciate their partnership. Next, we have our Golden Apple Award for Academic Enrichment for elementary with Bear to Bear, helping out at J. H. Heinz Elementary. And for Academic Enrichment Secondary, Baylor Interdisciplinary Core, helping out with Indian Spring Middle School. We appreciate both of those partners. And there is our Baylor Interdisciplinary Core at Indian Spring Middle. Our next award is going to be the Golden Apple Award for Community Service in elementary. That is going to be Mosaic Church for their work with J. H. Heinz Elementary School. And for secondary, Target with Indian Spring Middle School. And there is a really cool photo of Mosaic Church with J. H. Heinz Elementary. And you'll notice in the next photo, the bright red of Target with Indian Spring Middle. Our next Golden Apple Award is in science and math. And for any of you Pet fans, that is going to be PetSmart with Parkdale Elementary School. In our picture coming up is Chance the Dog with Parkdale Elementary School. Hopefully, it wasn't too hot that day. And coming up next is our Golden Apple Award for the Rookie of the Year, the New Black Collective and their work with Indian Spring Middle School. And you'll see a photo there with some representatives from the New Black Collective. We appreciate their work with Indian Spring Middle and congratulate them on being rookies of the year. And we want to thank all of our community partners. And also a special shout out to our community partner specialist Stephanie Heinz, who works in our communications department for running a great program and for organizing all of these, all these awards. Next, we're going to move on to our Rise Award. As we all know, Waco ISD's theme for the 2019 to 2020 school year is rise. The theme celebrates learning and growing as well as overcoming challenges and recognizes that no, that no school district rises by itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who deeply invested in the district's students and their success. Each month, the district recognizes a community partner making a difference with the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In June, the district is recognizing HEB. Now appropriately, HEB uses the term partners when referring to their employees. And they've been just that. These partners have supported our district in a variety of ways at both the campus and district level for many years by providing volunteers, donations of goods and products, and educational programs for our students, just to name a few. Store partners routinely support campus initiatives at parent nights and health and wellness fairs. They coordinate a Mother's Day cake decorating activity and fundraiser for elementary students and bring in two well-received programs, Be a Buddy, Not a Bully, and Come Grow With Me. Additionally, HEB was instrumental in partnering with the Waco ISD Education Foundation to create the HEB Celebrity Cookoff. It's the foundation's annual fundraising event, which has raised nearly $1.2 million for Waco ISD classrooms in its 14 years. As presenting sponsor, HEB and its partners actively participate by serving on the planning committee and support the event by securing other sponsorships and in-kind donations, providing in-kind and monetary donations, staffing one of the celebrity chef stations. We thank them very much. And Director of Retail Operations, go through some of these folks, Ed Page, Regional Director of Productivity, Michael Haynes, Marketing and Sales Manager, Cassie Mercer, Waco Area Community Coordinator, Rhonda Featherston, and other area store leaders, Alex Thompson from Wooded Acres, Brian Gardner from South Valley Mills, Ian Walker from Woodway, Lindsay Jobe from Bellmead, and Lance Franton from North 19th. We'll be accepting the award virtually. And there's a photo with some of our HEB partners again. We thank them very much and congratulate them on this month's Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. And that will wrap it up this evening for recognitions.
Thank you. Very nice. Okay. Consent agenda, number seven. I have been asked to pull items C and D. Is, is there anything else on the consent agenda that anyone would like pulled? Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
With the exception of C and D.
With the exception of C and D. Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Second, Ms. Houston. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of items C and D, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item C, interlocal agreement and contract authorization with the University of Texas at Austin, school design and creative technologies. I think there was a question here about the, the length of the agreements, the length of the agreement, the term of it.
I can take that and Cheryl Davis can add to it if she likes. But this is an interlocal that allows us to get consulting services from the University of Texas. As you know, the design thinking institutes have been a important part of the work that I've been doing with staff. And they have allowed us to begin to build capacity and leadership, but also to bring our team together. So.
Hey, Susan?
The YouTube. Yeah.
Well, I was just going to clarify, maybe save some time. And I don't, I don't have any question at all about the, the wisdom of spending, you know, the, the monies on that training. I think that's great. I'm just trying to understand why it involves signing a contract through 2025 that doesn't have any, but you know, whereas we basically negotiate the cost for each training session that we did along the way. I just couldn't see the reason in that.
The interlocal allows us to not have to go find three bids. We know the University of Texas is the provider that we want for this training. And if we use federal funds for, for any kind of training, we have to go get three bids. It's hard to find three bids for this.
Unless we have an interlocal agreement?
Correct. And so that's the purpose. Taking it out to 2025 just allows us to continue our work with them. I don't know that we'll work with them for 2025, but it gives us the flexibility to do so. If there's an expenditure over $50,000, we'll bring that back to the board. Cheryl, is that?
Yes, and it actually applies to our state bids as well now because we previously would buy services from universities, say, under professional services because the Attorney General had said, had expanded the definition of professional services. However, with some recent legislation, they have reinstituted the original definition of professional services. So it just, so now it only applies to architects, attorneys, doctors, those kinds of things. And so we can no longer use, get these kinds of services as a professional services, which means we would have to go out and bid anything over $50,000 as well. But the law does provide, and no governmental entity is exempt from that bid law. So the law does provide that we can purchase these under an interlocal agreement. And that would pertain to the city or the county or anybody else. McLennan County, we have one with McLennan Community College where we do our dual credit programs as well.
Okay. Well, all right. I guess it would be a futile exercise for me to try to divine from that what evil we're keeping at bay with this system. It just is.
Yeah.
It's the way we have to do things.
It's the way we have to do business, yes.
Would you care to speculate on what they thought they were achieving with this? Never mind. I didn't ask that. Okay.
I don't want to speculate.
Let's vote on C. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation and approve whatever this is. Any seconds?
One second.
Come on, add a boy.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya, taking away for the team there.
Thank you, Jose.
All those in favor of, of item C as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Best idea I've heard in a long time.
Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item D, Mr. Sykes?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question. On the, the director tower, is this replacing the existing tower? Do we never have a tower for Waco High?
Good question. Cheryl, you want to take that one?
Yes, it is replacing the existing tower. They have a rather small tower out there right now. And so this is more comparable to the one that we have at University High.
I see. Are these anchored with that concrete pad or are they portable or what?
No, they are anchored with a concrete pad.
Okay, thank you. On that basis, I move that we accept the administration's recommendation on purchases over $50,000 under pre-existing bid, purchasing cooperatives, or allowed professional service.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second.
I think that was, is that you, Stephanie?
Yeah, I think.
But you can give it to.
A second, Ms. Corwag. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So now we're back on track. Item 11, review and discuss COVID-19 Task Force 2020-2021 School Planning Options. Dr. Ken Cannon.
Okay, that's me. Happy to do so. Thank you, Josh, for putting that up. As you know, June the 8th, we convened a task force committee of approximately 50 teachers, campus and district administrators, representing all grade levels and special populations, along with several community members to discuss options for next school year. Then next slide there. The commu-, the committee was charged with developing options for providing instructional continuity for our students for next school year. I asked task force members to listen to a podcast before our first meeting. It was by Jennifer Gonzalez with Cult of Pedagogy. And it was called Reopening School: What It Might Look Like. She's a former classroom teacher, a college professor who taught pre-service teachers and has a website with resources for teachers. That was shared with me by one of our employees and I appreciated the options that were discussed. And the podcast served as a really nice way for us to begin thinking about multiple solutions for addressing the issue of how we, how we might have school and what it might look like in the fall. As you know, what we do is very complex. Changing the operations systems and routines of a system with 15,000 students and 2,500 employees creates a huge challenge for us. That's been a challenge for us since the closures started, school closures started. And it certainly will carry forward into the fall. So I asked the task force to focus on identifying options for an instructional plan first, so that we didn't get bogged down into all of these other details that certainly need to be addressed. But we, we need to figure out how we're going to do, to do the main thing, which is deliver instructions, instruction to our students. And then once that decision is made, then we can begin to work through all of these other considerations, such as meals and transportation and where, how we're going to use our classrooms. And we probably don't even have everything on this list yet that we will have to consider. So on June the 8th, at our first meeting, next slide, we, our members sign up for one of three working groups. There's an elementary group, a middle school group, and a high school group. And we had some group leaders who volunteered to lead their groups. And they left that first meeting with the charge of every person interviewing three parents or, and/or students to talk about how things went in the spring. They were also asked to discuss as a team the next week, the pros and cons of the scenarios in the podcasts. And then begin to formulate a plan with some ideas for each of those grade level spans. Next slide. And that's just a simple slide there. Here's the committee members that we had working from across the district. You could see elementary, middle, and high school. A little heavier on the high school group. These task force members volunteered for the group that they wanted to work on. And that's where we landed. Empathy interviews are, are, may have heard me speak to these before, but they're central to the, the design thinking process because when we design something, we want to design it to meet the needs of the user to the greatest extent possible. So the idea in conducting an interview is to understand the feelings and the experiences of others by listening, through conversation and listening. And so we, most of our task force members had the opportunity to practice empathy interviews as a part of the design thinking institutes that we held in the fall. And we did some more this spring, or actually early fall, probably winter, as we began to think about our new teachers. We actually conducted a good number of empathy interviews to start reworking our teacher induction program. That's just an aside there. And so here are the questions that we asked our task force members to use for those interviews. We wanted them to ask parents and students, how did things go while you were closed, while we were closed? What worked for you and what didn't work? And then finally, what is your greatest hope for the fall? Next slide, Josh. And here are some of the things we learned with parents and students. And see by the comments there, that. that the school closure certainly created a challenge for our families. There were things that they liked, and there were things that they didn't like. While parents could tell that our teachers were working hard and were helpful to them, they still, some reported that they struggled with technology and with managing multiple grade level materials. And you can, you can see that in those comments that were submitted back from those working groups. Next slide. Under the question, what worked? Here are some of the things that we learned from parents and students that they felt worked. Some liked the paper packets, some liked the technology. Overall, it sounded like there was some, there was positive communication with our families and that our staff was very helpful. I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to look at those comments. What didn't work? And this slide gives you some insight into some of the challenges of our students and what they and their parents faced. As you recall, we announced our closure on March 13th for two weeks. Our staff was away at that time for spring break, and we began working on a plan to stand up construction by March the 23rd. So one of our biggest challenges as a system was technology. We just weren't prepared to launch a one-to-one initiative. Our students, we hadn't been teaching in that manner, and our students didn't have school-issue devices. We hadn't had enough training for our teachers around that. And we didn't have one standard learning platform for delivering digital content. And that is evident in the comments that you see here. However, in spite of that, I would just say that I'm still incredibly proud of the work that was done. Our technology department was able to deploy devices. Our CNI team wrote lesson plans and assembled at-home learning kits and digital lessons. And our teachers just jumped right in to do what they needed to do to take care of their students and our families. And so we would have liked for it to have been smoother. And perhaps it would have been had we already been in a one-to-one environment in our schools, especially at the secondary level. But we did the best that we could under the circumstances that we were faced with, and I am still very proud of our team for what was accomplished. So last question was, what was, what's your greatest hope for the fall? And I think that you see that word that comes up right at the top, consistent. Consistency was a word that we heard a lot in our conversations with task force members. They wanted consistency in our instructional plan. We wanted more opportunities for parents and students to interact with teachers. And I would categorize that as structure. Parents wanted more structure in that communication and when they connected with teachers. And then there was a need for parental support for techno, technology. And then also, we know that there's some fear about returning in the fall. Although it seems like people generally want to get back to a sense of normalcy. So there are some conflicting things in the data, for sure. Next slide there, actually move on to the next one. So we moved on. The committee spent some time talking about the scenarios that were posed in the podcast. There were three here. And in the interest of time, I won't go all, go over all the information that was shared, but we did spend a good amount of time just talking about the pros and cons of going 100% virtual, doing some kind of a hybrid or half-days or alternating days, and then running multiple tracks of school. And so we, we probably spent the better part of last week's meeting on that. Then we began to talk about what we might do in Waco ISD in the fall. And we began this conversation not knowing what the guidelines might be from the state. So each working group presented their ideas, and they had ideas that pretty much were either 100% virtual, you can go to the next slide there, or they were some kind of a hybrid model consisting of both on-campus or in-person learning and virtual learning. And again, you know, there was not one single plan that was determined to be the plan, but they, they gave us some ideas that we, we were able to discuss as a committee and begin to think about while we waited on information from the state. So on Tuesday, we had the superintendents met with the commissioner, and we thought we would be getting health guidelines for in-person instruction and some kind of guidance around how many students we might have in a classroom, whether there would be screening requirements, whether students would be required to wear masks. But that's, that's not what was provided to us. And so we have some questions still about what school might look like in the fall from the state's perspective. Again, that, that was Tuesday's meeting. What we did get was information on remote instruction and how we're funded for remote instruction. The state did briefly post a health guidance document. It was removed, and then I think it was put back up again as a draft. And there was no commitment of when we might actually get a finalized document. So what I want to do is talk about the slide that Josh has on the screen now. And what we did get from the state was information on two kinds of remote instruction. And so there are two methods. One is the synchronous instruction, which requires all of your participants to be present at the same time virtually. And so you would meet with students as a teacher, just like we're meeting as a group. And you would have a set schedule, and you would report in at a certain time and have to take attendance at a certain time for synchronous instruction. Asynchronous instruction doesn't require every student to be present virtually at the same time. The work can be done in learning management systems. It can be done with interactions with teachers. And there's a different method to code attendance in one of three ways for asynchronous learning. So those are really important terms that will probably be used, they will be used a lot. So we'll want to, we'll want to continue to focus on those. Next slide, a little more about synchronous instruction. Here's the slide from TEA's presentation. And I would point to bullet three, that again, just to emphasize that students have to have an, there has to be an official attendance time for students to be marked present for the day and documented in P's. And then the next bullet there is that students who are not logged in at the documented official attendance time are marked absent. So if you're coding those students as synchronous, they've got to be with you in the classroom, just like they would be at school. And you, feel free to stop me if I'm going too fast. I'm trying to honor your time a little bit. Next slide there. A little more on synchronous instruction. The first bullet, there is a minimum number of daily minutes that you have to be virtually working with students in order to receive state funding. In third through fifth grade, that is 180 minutes a day, that's three hours. And for sixth through 12th grade, four hours is required. And then the state has said that pre-K through second grade are not eligible for funding through the synchronous model. So if you choose this model, you have to choose in-person or asynchronous for pre-K through two. And then the last bullet there I want to point out to you is that school grading policies for remote student work must be consistent with those used before COVID or on-campus assignments. So, so we will need to revert back to our grading policies that we used previously, even if we're, we are using remote learning. Paige, next one, next slide there. And just a, just a little information, some requirements from TEA's. TEA here, we have to submit an attestation that we're prepared to offer it before our funding will flow. And I won't bore you with all of the other bullets on that slide. Next slide is more information about asynchronous instruction. And in this slide addresses grading policies. So if students are in-person, working at school, or if they are at home, working remotely, they, they will all have the same grading guidelines, and it has to be consistent with those used before COVID for on-campus assignments. Next slide. And this one is an interesting one for us, for us. And I think creates a lot of work for us in terms of attendance accounting. We generate full, full-day funding for each day engaged. And so if you look at that last bullet, you, there are three ways that students can be classified as engaged. One is they're making progress in the learning management system on that particular day that they're counted in attendance. The next one is that they, that they're making progress from, from the interactions that they've had with teachers on that particular day. And the third one is that they turn in assignments that day. So the state wants to account for students every day in order to receive funding from them. So you can't get all of your assignments for a week and do two of those, or do all of those on two or three days. You have to be working, and we have to document that you're working every day, if you're working remotely. Next slide. There we go. Just a few more takeaways from what TEA has said about funding and how it will be generated for remote instruction. Regardless of how students are learning, we have to take attendance every day, whether they're learning in-person or remotely. Truancy laws will apply next school year, and students are required to attend at least 90% of their classes. That was waived this year in order to receive credit and be promoted. And remote attendance in both aspects will be, or both respects will be treated the same as on-campus attendance. Students will choose, students and families will choose how they attend school, and school districts are expected to offer both the option of participating in on-campus instruction 100% of the time and the option of participating in remote learning 100% of the time. And the, and today's meeting with the commissioner, they clarified that we can, we can offer a hybrid option where students participate in a mix of on-campus and remote learning in addition to, but not in place of, on-campus instruction. So we have to have students on campus every single day. We don't have to have all of them on campus, but parents have to have that option. And so we will be standing up school in multiple ways for next year. The last takeaway, next slide, poses some challenges for protecting the health of our students and our staff. And I want to point out that if an overwhelming number of our families chose for their students to receive on-campus instruction 100% of the time, meaning that we, we effectively can't limit class size, right, more than we are already doing, then it may not be possible for us to keep students spaced out at least six feet apart in the classroom. The draft public health guidance that was briefly posted on the website, TEA's website on Tuesday, seems to have been written with the goal of maximizing the number of students that can be on campus at the same time. Though instead of placing any restrictions on the number of students in the classrooms, which we were told would not happen today, that there wouldn't be any guidance from the state, the draft calls for practicing social distancing only where feasible without disrupting the educational experience. And I, I just note that this is a significant change from the guidance that we received for summer school. That guidance initially limited the number of people in a classroom to 11 at a time. Was later updated to 15 or 16 at a time. And now we were told today that there, there would be no guidelines provided from the state on numbers of students in a classroom. The draft guidance also did not require social distancing on, on buses or the use of masks, although it did recommend having students wear masks on buses when they are seated in close proximity. In fact, the draft document said that masks should not be worn by students in kindergarten or below, and that parents could determine whether or not masks are appropriate for other age students. So it appears that the state is rethinking some aspects of the draft, and we're, we're anxiously awaiting their final, final public health guidance from TEA, but we've been given no timeline for when we might receive that. So I want to, I would just want to be clear in Waco ISD that that public health guidance from the state is a starting point for us and most likely not our final plan. We'll be working closely with local health experts, experts, health experts to make decisions. And of course, we want to put the safety and well-being of our students and staff first. And so we may likely need to put in some additional measures to keep them safe. It's also very concerning that we end up in a situation where we're not able to maintain sufficient space between students. And I think more concerning that the draft document is, seems disconsisted from the reality of COVID-19 and what's happening in the state. In late May, when the spread of the virus seemed to be relatively out of control, the state was saying that we could have no more 11 people, more than 11 people in a classroom at the same time. Now that we have our highest numbers of hospitalizations in the state, the draft public health guidance that was posted did not limit how many people can be in a classroom at any single time. So we're getting conflicting messages. It's confusing for all of the school districts, and we're all struggling with it, quite frankly. So what's next? So we planned to survey a random sample of about 400 families in the next couple of weeks to inform our planning. And I could have Kyle explain that in a moment if you'd like. We'll also be reaching out to our employees to better understand which staff members might not be able to return to work on campus in the fall due to health concerns. And then we hope to come back to you on July the 16th and present what we see as our best options for the next school year. We'll be continuing to work with our task force to develop those. And then, once we get those best options, I'd like to have a virtual town hall. And then, once we get those best options, I'd like to have a virtual town hall. You might recall, we did that this past year, a tele-town hall, to answer questions from our families, our employees, and the community. And then on July the 23rd, I'd bring that anything back to you that needs board approval or action, and that could likely be the school calendar. We may want to extend the school day or the school year a bit more time, built into our calendar so that if closures, that we get our required 75,600 minutes of school in. So that was a fast overview. We'll be talking about this at the next two meetings. I'll continue the work with the task force, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Madam President. Madam President. Hello?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, go ahead, Alan.
Just quickly, as a summation. Clearly, we are in a period of rapidly changing landscape, and it's accelerating. Communication is going to be so, so desperately important as we unfold these options and plans and evaluate those options and plans. So I think we need to be prepared for, and I know we will be, for a time when we may develop a plan, landscape shifts, we need to revise and modify and come back with Plan B, C, or D, and then communicate those. I mean, that's just the nature of what we're seeing right now, and it is the resurgent as everybody concerned, and it's going to stay there for a while as we approach the fall. So the flexibility is important, communication is important, and I know you all will build that into whatever options you look at and communicate with the community. Also, has the TEA provided, or will the TEA provide any guidelines or guidance for monitoring or testing students, faculty, administration, or whatever? Or is that going to come locally from our health advisors and professionals here locally?
No, I think I did see some information about separating students who have had direct contact with COVID, but I don't recall that off the top of my head, but I could give that to you in the next report.
I'm just wondering how the guidance is going to shape up in terms of, I mean, the technology's even changing, and in terms of being able to monitor. I mean, there's new devices out now that can test 30 people a minute by walking through a tunnel. And that's part of the changing landscape. Now, I don't know the degree of reliability, but it's moving forward pretty quick, so.
It is. I don't recall, I'm pretty sure that I read we would not have to take temperatures of students. There would be some kind of screening, weekly screening process, and staff would have to have a daily screening, self-reporting, a self-screening process. So there was some guidance, I think, but I think it will be pretty limited. And then, like I said, we may want to apply some stricter measures in Waco ISD, ensure the safety of our students. But I would say people are wanting to know what school is going to look like in the fall. We're just seven, seven and a half weeks away from the first day of school, and I don't think anyone has a solid plan. I'm looking at the listserv every day and reading about school districts, and pretty much everyone is looking at multiple options, but we're all waiting on that final guidance from the state before we land on a particular plan. This is definitely complex, it's a challenge, and I think it's here to stay for a while.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good questions.
Mrs. President?
Mm-hmm.
Stephanie. Dr. Kinnaman, I appreciate all the work that you've done to put this together and really get community buy-in. And I guess you kind of touched on it, but could you, you know, I'm looking at the TEA draft health guidelines, and it's very concerning to me, and was just wondering how much leeway do we have as a district to kind of decide for ourselves? And obviously, with and under the direction and with the collaboration of the healthcare system here, also our health district, I just think that, you know, as we see the numbers rise, I think about our students, I think about their families, I think about our teachers, our administrators, there's, you know, COVID is a very new virus, and we don't know how it affects people. And some of the long-term effects that I've been reading that people might suffer from, like long-term kidney damage, blood clots, I mean, there seems to be some pretty significant adverse health effects from this virus, and there really doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to how it affects people. So just, yeah, I think I was just kind of wanting clarity on that, that this is, that even though TEA has put this out, we still have flexibility to kind of work with our local health department and our local, I guess, health district to kind of implement sort of our own, or, yeah.
We do. We have the freedom to have increased requirements or lowering the class size is certainly an option that we have. What's given is we have to have in-person instruction, we have to abide by the attendance accounting in order to receive our funding, but we can require masks, we can take temperatures, we can separate students in a number of ways, but we just have to figure all those logistical things out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments, too, because our fear, you know, we, our fear is we'll be having to shut down classrooms as students become COVID, and it will be, it's going to keep us busy.
Madam President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manning.
All right. My concern, I think in the last census that we took, if, and don't quote me on this, but if I remember correctly, in 2010, that the last census that was taken, the average educational degree over here in the East Waco and possibly North Waco was only about a 12th grade education, and even less than that. So my concern is our kids been out of school since March 16th. A lot of these kids have not had, I've always heard teachers say, well, when school starts, where it takes them two to three weeks to get the kids back up to speed, if even if we do open and can have school and everything, these kids may be, some of our kids may be six to eight weeks behind because of the fact they have not had the strict discipline and support that they need. I always tell you, Dr. Kinnaman, I have three nieces up in Dallas, and all of them are teachers. Well, my great nieces and nephews, hey, they haven't missed a beat because their mothers are teachers, so they haven't missed nothing. But I am truly concerned about what has happened now, and what are these kids, when they come back to school, and what ever happened in August or September, at what point will they be at? And I expect it to be, our teachers are going to have a whole bunch of problems trying to get these kids to catch back up.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I want to mention, since you made me remember it, that the state is requiring accountability in 2020, 2021. So we will have to be on our game and be able to measure our students and make progress with them quickly. So thank you for your comments.
Well, but, I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, my personal opinion, we're going to be, we're going to be behind eight ball, behind on bits. And, 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 and that's, that's going, I think it's going to take us down, because it's going to take a long time. And if we have to keep on doing this online learning, I see, I mean, I hate to be the gloom and doom and everything, but I don't see progress made, especially with our people over here in East Waco and the education level of the parents over here in East Waco, and what these kids have had to face since March, March 16th. It's going to be rough. It's going to be, and it's going to put a burden on the school district at the same time. It's going to put a big burden on the school district.
Yes. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to piggyback on some of what Trustee Manning's saying. I mean, we have kids also who are in special education who, I mean, how's the asynchronous and the synchronous learning going to look for them when they have, you know, plans, where they may have extra time to turn things in, or they may have short assignments? And I know from our experience personally and other people's experience who talk to me, that, you know, I mean, this is something, I think the district did a great job with what they had to do in a short amount of time. I think it's phenomenal. The teachers were doing a great job of working with people.
I'm still a little.
There's a lot of people who I don't think are getting reach, and I think it's like what, what Trustee Manning's saying, and also, even if you have people who have a more sophisticated level of education, they're not teachers, and they're also probably working. And so that's like the whole idea that there's going to be, you know, absentee issues on top of trying to deliver that product to these children is very concerning. And it's also, of course, very concerning that we're in, the end of June, and we don't have a plan from TEA. And I mean, I think it's wonderful that our district is being proactive and trying to put something in place with no guidance, you know, trying to take a shot in the dark, basically, and it really sounds like what you guys are coming up with is very workable, but just like, those are some of the issues that I'm just thinking of. You know, I mean, we have kids who just aren't going to be able to access that technology, and they're going to have to, because we are going to have people get sick, we're going to have people who have to miss, you know, being in person, so.
Yeah. I think it would be difficult to assume that we would fill up every classroom in the way that we traditionally do that, and that's a decision point. How many kids do you want to have in a classroom? Do you want them all in-person, or do you want to have part of them in a hybrid model? And do you rotate it? How do you rotate it? And parents will be allowed to opt in and out of different models according to the state. We can put a little guide, some restrictions on when they can do that, but we've been told that they can move freely from one model to the next. So it will be hard on everyone, because families are working, and we have special needs, and we have kids who are behind, so this will be a struggle. Thank you, Ms. Houston.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
I think we need to get really good at online learning.
Yes.
What are the obstacles to that? Is it the devices? Is it the curriculum, or the connectivity, or what's?
Yeah, there are several obstacles. We had, we have some really great instructional digital resources, so that was the silver lining. And what we did is we had great resources. We don't have a learning management system, a standardized platform to deliver all the programs, so one of the challenges was for students and parents to learn how to get in and out of different systems, and they felt like there were too many. So a learning management system would help with that. So I know our new technology executive director, Jerry, has been working with Deana Kornblum on how we could get an LMS system in place so we can deliver content in one place where gradebook and everything is together.
Is there a product available?
They're all, oh, yeah, absolutely. But, you know, we, we don't have, we didn't have, we didn't have, we didn't teach students how to learn digitally prior to this, how to go home and do assignments. So, you know, they had no experience with this kind of learning. So we were able to pull enough devices together to help families, but connectivity was a problem as well. And teachers, you know, we didn't have, we didn't have enough professional development around how to, how to make it work. How do you, how do you go 100% remote? So we have work to do in all of those areas. And we had old devices, too, so there, you know, there were some challenges with those as well, some of those devices. So your comment is accurate, we need to get good at online learning.
Yeah, I know, that's easier said than done. I get it. It's incredibly complicated.
It is complicated.
I know.
But we can do it. We can do.
It's not going to happen fast, I don't.
It won't happen fast, and it won't be perfect. And so some of the, you know, I think probably one of the biggest complaint, or not complaint, but challenge that we heard was we switched from this phase to the next phase.
Yeah, I saw that.
It was out of, it was out of necessity, right? Our kids didn't have devices, so we had to start with paper, and then we moved to the next phase, and then to improve, we moved to the third phase. And so, you know, we literally had to start where we were, and we moved as fast as we could to get better, but it's a big system, and it happened overnight.
Yeah. Not much time to plan.
Yeah, not much time to plan or train, and then we were, you know, then we had to not be, we weren't allowed to be together either to do the work, so we were learning everything all at the same time.
Y'all think kids are going to social distance in the hallway?
Yeah. Good question.
I've got news. They're not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No matter how you get them sitting in the classroom.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We'll be back on July 16th to give you an update.
That was a sincere good luck, not a smart aleck good luck.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Very, I appreciate it. We, I'm proud of our team. We'll get to an answer. It won't be perfect, but we'll do the very best that we can to take care of our students and families this next school year.
Susan, what can we do? What can we do to help you and your staff? I feel kind of helpless.
Yeah, I think, I think, just tell us what you're hearing, and you're doing, you're doing the work that you're supposed to be doing. You have approved, you approved some more devices this evening, some Chromebooks, so we have even more equipped computers to hand out to our students. And so I think the board is, you're, you're doing exactly what you should be doing. Just ask good questions and, and support us, and we will do the heavy lifting to the best of our ability. So thank you for all of your support. I know you've approved a technology replacement cycle plan for us earlier in the year, I think right before this hit, and then added some additional equipment tonight. We may want to purchase an LMS, and so you've been very flexible in allowing us to do the work we need to do, and we thank you.
Does anybody have anything else before we, I think I've lost my agenda, I think announcements probably.
I think you have one more item before announcements.
Delegate.
Oh, gosh, we do. Okay. So next is the conversation about the designation of a delegate and alternate for Tasby, assuming that we have the Tasby Delegate Assembly in the fall. I have been a bit presumptuous in putting Mr. Manning's name in there already, but he represents us so well and is gracious to agree to do it every year, so. I have been a bit presumptuous in, in putting Mr. Manning's name in there already, but he represents us so well and is gracious to agree to do it every year, so with your permission, or I hope you'll continue to serve, but I don't have an alternate. Last year, I don't know why, I ended up being the, the alternate, and I wanted to see if anybody else had an interest in serving in the event. Actually, Norman, can't the delegate, can't the alternate go as well with you?
The, for, for the Delegate Assembly, only one person can sit on the floor, the alternate can ask to sit outside. And if the Lord willing and the creek don't rise, I don't mind doing that again.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm so grateful that you, that you serve us in that way, and you always bring back good information. So just, I'm, I'm looking for a volunteer, anybody who's willing to serve as an alternate in the event that Norman is unable to attend for some reason.
I'm, okay, well, assuming we're in that, we're going to be in Dallas on October 3rd if there's a convention, is that correct?
Right. If, if, if we, if it's in Dallas.
Right, exactly. So, and then how, how early in the morning is this assembly?
No, okay, okay, the, the, the way, the way the assembly works is, at noon time, we meet by our district, of course, region, and of course, we are Region 12, all the districts in Region 12, we meet, we, they, they send us a book with, with all the information on, on the what, what, what laws and changes that, that we want to do and stuff like that, and so.
Hey, Trustee Manning, Trustee, you have me at noon. I'm good, sign me up.
Well, we meet, and, and they fee us lunch, but like, like, like I always say, you know, for the first couple of years while I was doing this, I did not get CEC for this, but now they do give us, uh, uh, continuing education credits for this, so, and then.
I need all of that.
Because we meet, we start about 1:00 o'clock, and we, we will go to almost 5:00 o'clock. That, that meeting is about three or four hours long.
Never tell Carrie it starts at 12 or 1. Carrie, it starts at 10:00 o'clock.
Okay, we need to stop talking about it before you talk him out of it, Norman.
I resent that. Noon.
So, I, do I hear a motion to approve Mr. Manning as our delegate with Mr. Dupuy as the alternate?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Manning, Mr. Dupuy, for representing us.
Don't fail me, Norman.
Hey, Carrie, we're going to have a drink after this over there.
Okay, all right, all right.
Well, there you go. Okay, but, item 13, announcements. Kyle?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a, a couple of things we'd like to highlight quickly this evening. The first is a really exciting announcement that was made earlier today, and that's the Greater Waco Chambers Lead Mentorship Program presented their $20,000 memorial Bradley Hulse Scholarship to Kimberly Hernandez, who is a member of the Class of 2020 from Waco High. So we're really excited to see Kimberly's work recognized in this way, and her participation in the lead mentorship program, which is outstanding. The next Monday, we want to make sure that you have on your radar that the Texas Caucus of Black School Board Members is hosting the Power of Prayer Conference Call at 7:00 PM. This is something that's open to all individuals of faith and will be an opportunity to recognize and hold up the members of the caucus who have seen loss firsthand in their school districts across the state and across the country during this time of crisis. Mr. Manning, was there anything you wanted to add about that?
Sir, if anyone have any questions or, or need the details about that, you can just email me and I will send you the information about that.
Thank you. And then the, the last thing, we just want to remind all of our families that they are eligible for the pandemic electronic benefit transfer, and if they haven't taken the opportunity to apply for that yet, that application window closes on June 30th. You can apply online at yourtexasbenefits.com/learn/PEBT, and that's a, a one-time benefit of $285 for each student that you have in Waco ISD, because all of our students receive free meals for the community eligibility provision. All of our students are eligible for that, and so we want to make sure, before that closes next week, that our families have an opportunity to apply for that benefit.
And Mr. DeBir, I have been pushing that through a lot of our local black churches and everything like that, so I hope we have a great response from the, from our, our students and parents in Waco ISD.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Manning, and thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Cannon?
No, thank you for your time this evening.
Great meeting, everybody. So our next meeting is July 11th?
July 16th.
July 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so then, happy 4th of July.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupuy, check, check emails, I said, I mean, your texts, I sound like you a couple texts.
I, with that, I think we need to adjourn.
Yeah, all right, I'm, I'm looking forward to this. All right. Get on, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.